Welcome to the August 20th, 2018 meeting of the Merrimack School Board. If you could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Item number two is public participation. Anyone that wishes to speak, please come to the microphone and state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Bob Bevel. I live at 12 Blair Road. And I would like to speak to an item that's on the agenda tonight for item number five. And that is the request to offer teacher survey related to teachers' emotional intelligence and vulnerability to stress. As part of the package you received tonight, it has a recommendation letter along with a brochure from the author of the survey. The recommendation is to waive the two-week rule. I'm asking tonight that that not be until people have had a chance to comment, as this is just now coming up. To please ask questions, please pursue what are the positive predictive values of the survey? How would employment security be affected? What about the privacy of the teachers? Is there an opt-out? And what disseminations would be given to outside sources? Thank you very much.
And at this time, we will close public participation. Item number three, system of care and learning supports update and considerations. I invite to the table Julie DeLuca and John Fabrizio of the District Mental Health Committee. Julie also serves as our Assistant Principal at Thornton's Ferry. And John is our Director of Student Services, and we welcome you both.
Good evening. Tonight, we're here to talk about our work that began in 2015. I am on, thank you. And we started with a mental health committee and looking at a system of care and learning supports. And we presented to you back then, 2015. And then we continued our work. And we've began to grow something that we are starting to see some results in doing. And things are coming forward that we're saying, well, we are creating a system. We are connecting a little more. We are talking to each a little more. And we're breaking down some of those barriers between buildings where our committee has really become a nice, tight committee. We've stayed pretty consistent with some committee members that have left and we've replaced. But overall, our committee consists of the following. We have Deb Barker, our Director of Counseling at Merrimack High School. Stacy Conti, our district coordinator. Julie DeLuca, of course, Assistant Principal at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School. Lauren Doro, our school psychologist, who mainly is positioned at Merrimack High School. Myself. Karen Hammons, nurse at Merrimack High School. And a newer member this year is Mary Ann Sabat, Special Education Teacher for Master Cola Elementary School. Kathleen Hoppa, School Counselor at Reed's Ferry. Laura Livy, Behavior Specialist at James Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Christina Lopez, School Counselor at Merrimack Middle School. And Ferds Hyden, the School Counselor at Thornton's Ferry Elementary School.
So many of these slides may look very familiar, as these are some of the same slides we presented in 2016. And the beauty of going back and looking at your old presentations and actually being able to use some of the supply, same slides, really speaks to our goal around sustainability. And that's always been something that has been very meaningful to us. That, and why we've pretty, we've pretty much set, looked at a framework called a system of care, so that we are looking at something that is sustainable. We go back to our original purpose. And some of this, I know Mrs. Nunes will be new to you. So we also were mindful of that. So if you have any questions, certainly, we're happy to answer any of those questions. Our original purpose back in 2015 was to really look at what a system of care and learning supports means for Merrimack. And we were very fortunate to have all of your support and approval to go forward. We collected data, if you recall, and a year later, in 2016, we once again presented to all of you and presented our findings with certainly, one of the main findings was our supports, which were many at the time, and the resources which are many, were fragmented. And we were looking for, and we're starting to see this come together, an integrated system of care for all of our six schools across the district. And also, we found that many of our helpers, school counselors, school psychologists, behavior specialists, past teachers, spent most of their time in working with Tier III and Tier II students. And our goal is to provide a system of care for all students. We have stayed the course on that. Our goal, then, continues to be our goal today. To develop an integrated, multi-tiered system of care that develops our capacity as educators to address mental health concerns and our barriers that we know to learning and achievement, and to increase the resiliency of all of our students. We looked at a framework that had six content areas. We looked at systems and protocols and procedures. With some of those, as you know, from our April School Board meeting, we updated you on some of their initiatives and things and changes we have made. Interestingly enough, John and I had the pleasure of presenting at a summit that was held up in Plymouth. And the keynote was Cassie Akley. And there was over 355 participants, mostly representing districts from all across the state, and frankly, from Massachusetts and Rhode Island. And we were choosing as our district to tell our story. And at the time, when we presented this framework to all of you in 2016, we, most of the state at the time, was looking at other frameworks. Interestingly enough, at this summit, we attended a presentation. And folks from the Bureau of Special Education at the DOE presented this framework, as a framework that they are going to be looking at for the state. So, once again, Merrimack, all of you, we are ahead of our time. And it was nice to see that this is something that is going to be sustainable at the state level.
I'm just gonna add on this slide, too, that when you look at these different areas, when I talked about when I opened, I said, "We feel like there's growth." And one of the things that we had to do when we were up at Plymouth over the last week was really look at, where is your progress? And where have you come on some of these areas? And it was nice to go around to our committee and who've all taken on kind of a lead in one of these areas and to report out and say that, yes, we have, we have done more with our community outreach. And we have put on things for our parents. And we, we are starting to make an initiative to move forward with some of our work around, consistency around our crisis and our crisis intervention. And really about how do we engage families more? We're doing some more of that work in our system and creating resource guides for parents. We're doing some of that work. And it's nice to see that we can all report out in a positive way. So, budget implications. And...
This is a slide we presented in 2016.
Yeah, 2016, we came to you and we put this slide up here. And it's very interesting to look at. I remember that time at the board, we were talking to the board. And one of the comments was, from the board, was, "How can we support you?" And at the time, it's not every day we come in front of you and say, "We're okay for now." And we don't need to increase at this time. We need to keep working. And we've used the PD money and the professional development time. And the cost has been for subs and for time for us to work together and for us to do summer work and for us to work as a committee, really, over the course of these, these three years. So you'll see 2016, 17, there wasn't a huge financial cost that. It was time working together and materials to start doing some of our publications and bringing things together. And then, as we, we went through to 17, 18, again, there was more summer committee work. And we met often during that summer. And then, we started to align back to my building and in our office of, which was then Special Services, we really aligned to more of a student services and a student support area. And that's kind of what some of our expansion was. But that was really, again, something without a minimal cost to it, and it was all self-sustained. Then along the way, we got some Project GROW money that we talked about. And we became part of that Project GROW grant. And that $50,000 has sustained us to do some of the, the work we're doing now for materials and supplies and presenters that we brought into the district. And it's all come through that funding and doing that. When we get to 18, 19, something on that board, you'll notice, we talked about consultation services and professional development. We've done that, materials. And then, again, we met this summer to do more summer work. We met the course of three days up north at our, at our presentation and, and the workshop. And also, another three days to start the school year, do some of our planning. So, what that final one says is staffing for a system of care aligned with student services and, and that student and some consultant time from a student wellness coordinator. We're gonna start, we're at a point right now where Julie and I really feel is the leads in this. It's taking a life of its own on. It's growing to that point right now where it needs a point person sustain, some sustainability to really continue our efforts, to outreach to the multiple districts we're working with, to outreach to the community people, to have a point on this that can work kind of within the day, then beyond the day. And that's kind of what we're hoping to do coming into the 18, 19 year.
So today, it's been our practice not to come before you and ask for a decision. It's not been our practice to come before you and ask for a decision on outcomes. We have focused on process. And so today, we ask for your consideration and for your approval to move forward around a process of really looking into the feasibility of a student wellness coordinator and what that may mean for Merrimack. We're not coming here with a job description in hand. We're not coming here with a price point. We want an opportunity to get your feedback around what is important information all of you need as we go into this budget cycle to help you and our leadership team make the best decision. That's what we've done all along with our system of care. And we're back at the table asking for your consideration. What is important? What is information you need from us? In addition, in April, we talked about our Tier One. Currently, we're piloting two major social-emotional learning programs. We're continuing to pilot this year. Just a preview, come spring, we'll be coming before you and asking for your approval and working very closely with Dr. McLaughlin around the program and the curriculum. So that's a preview. We're asking for your ongoing support. We've been involved with a regional mental health cohort with Salem, London, Darien, Hudson. We're asking for your continued approval to continue this work, as well as looking at what additional professional development that we've been able to mainly fund through Project GROW that we can continue to offer, not only to staff, but to families and students.
So, that begins the conversation of what questions do you have for us? What more do you want to know about our vision around that full-time student wellness coordinator? And what other questions you have about as we move into the budget cycle for next year?
So far, I've seen Andy's hand, so...
Everybody else shaking their head? No?
Yep.
I don't ask questions usually. So, thanks again. I mean, this is obviously a great progression. I think that as we get into the budgetary cycle to ask for this, I think we need to be, my suggestion is, we need to be very clear about exactly what role the student wellness coordinator is. I know that many people have different misconceptions around what wellness means, what emotional wellness means. I mean, we're gonna talk a little bit about that from a staff perspective a little later in terms of that. But I think that we must be crisp and clear on exactly the scope and scale about what it is we're talking about. The, you know, sort of what interaction with students and programs and stuff, all this is going to be, so that we make it clear to everybody that's listening exactly what it is you're accomplishing or trying to accomplish and what the goals are and things, and how it fits with other districts. You talk about your coordinate, you know, cooperative work with other districts. I think it's important for us to, to understand where other districts look to Merrimack, the things that they're doing, that they wanna, you know, sort of aspire to, and what other districts are doing in this space. So I think it's, I mean, mental health in this area is, I think it's an area we have a lot of need for. But there's also a lot of assumptions being made by, by people that were trying to delve into the mines and the things which aren't really true, right? It's certainly not true at all. So I think the opportunity is for us to be very clear about what, what the roles and what the program is and really remove any doubt and fears or misconceptions people might have, so...
Cinda?
I would say in addition to that, you know, a day in the life of, you know, what those roles and responsibilities are, you know, how we're not able to accomplish our vision without that position and how we are able to accomplish it with the position, as well as, I would say, anything that people on the committee are doing now that's taking away from students. So if you have people that are trying to kind of do a little piece here, a little piece there, what is that doing to infringe maybe learning and, you know, for, for other kids? But I would say, that's what I'd be looking for.
Are there any other questions or comments?
Okay, I had a couple of comments. I definitely think that, you know, what, what this wellness coordinator entails, based on the number of students we have, and it went up last year, actually, from September to June, it's, it's definitely something that, when you ask a part-time role, you're not gonna get every objective accomplished. And you need to be able to spread your, your resources amongst buildings and amongst other districts. As John knows, and I thank him again, just associating myself with Merrimack, being in other, the company of other school board members in my role at the NHSBA, as soon as I mentioned I was from Merrimack and we had this committee, I was getting emails, "What are we doing? How can, you know, can you help us?" We're, we're in a place where, you know, we need help right now. And I, you know, and John was nice enough to take their call and guide them in the right directions. But, you know, this is, again, you're talking about the state taking a platform as well. So it's not a Merrimack issue. It's, it's a New Hampshire issue. And no, it's not a New Hampshire issue. I was at the NSBA, and it's a national issue. So the National School Boards Association, emotional wellness in the classroom was addressed every single day throughout the day in different, different sessions. So many of what we, so many of the things we talk about that are not even directly course-related are, are being addressed at the national level. This is not an anomaly in Merrimack at all. It is us being a little ahead of the curve, and we're very fortunate that we recognize something and saw an opportunity to better it and are gonna continue to do that. But this is, this is not unique. You know, when you talk about what a student can accomplish, they do their best with, you know, with a clear mind and, and, you know, a ability to focus. And when your emotional wellness isn't there, you're limiting the child's potential. So we want student performance, and that does start right here and continues throughout, you know, what we do with curriculum. So, so with that, again, we do want you to keep letting us know what you need. Let us know how you see it being needed. And that helps us to not only make a well-informed decision, but advocate the decision we make. That's very important. You know, this is such an area where there's so many questions. Up until five years ago, talking about mental health issues was, was not a comfortable subject. And it was, you know, a shameful subject. And thanks to John Broderick, it became more of a normal conversation in the home. And that campaign has really done a lot to break down barriers. And it's a start. I think there's a lot more we need to do. And I'm glad that we are brave enough to take the, the time and the commitment to, to expose what's needed to, to really run a successful school. And this is a big part of it. So, I'm definitely interested in what the role will take on. But it's definitely something that is not unexpected based upon how you've been preparing us consistently at our board meetings over the last three years. So for that, we thank you. Is there anyone else from, anything else? We're good? You're good. You get the rest of the night and maybe about 45 minutes of daylight left. Enjoy it. Oh, you are? Well, please do. Always welcome. So, and, but wait, there's more, John. So, item number four is a report and updates regarding student services. And we have in our packet those reports. And we will turn it back over to you, so thank you.
I always wanna stand when I present, so I have a hard time sitting when I present. But it's okay. I'll do my best to sit still. It's an opportunity tonight to talk about reports, also progress. And then, I, as Mark and I call them, no-tie days when I come in the summer. And I don't have to wear a tie. It's a, we do, I purposely didn't wear one today when I presented. But I, I said to myself, you know, it's, it's a nice opportunity to come. And I have now for a few summers now, come here and sat and talked a little bit about not only the progress we've made in, in the world of Special Services, now Student Services, but also talked about kind of what we're forecasting. What am I seeing as trends? What am I seeing as things you may see in the upcoming budget? Because it, as I've said it before, and I'll say it again, I am incredibly grateful to be part of the Merrimack system and have the opportunity to lead our students with needs. And fortunate enough that we're supported to do a lot of that. Because I am, as Shannon mentioned, around the state and around some, sometimes globally in, in these conferences. And, and I know what we can do. And it's a pleasure to be able to, to be part of that every day. So I just wanted to start with that, because it truly is. So here we are, this year, as you know, in years past, I've come before you and I have talked about kind of what's, what's going on in our world. And, and it's interesting, how do we measure success? What data supports the success? And what are some of the areas that we need to focus on to maintain success and continuous improvement? And that's really what tonight's about. So I'm hoping if you have questions in these three areas, you please ask me along the way. Or in the end, I'll have an opportunity to do that. But I'm gonna try to walk through a few things tonight. And, and the reports are always wonderful. And, and I love the fact that you'll hear about 10 years of continued success when it comes to how we're measured. And I like that. And of course, it's part of my world to stay in compliance and do those things. And when we're all doing that, and our team is working, I'm working with Matt and the financials and, and Marge and Mark and all the coordinators and all the principals on the, on the how we treat families and, and working as a system, those are wonderful things. Beyond that, though, it comes to true success preparing students for independence. And, and every day, that's where I really wanna go. We, this slide talks about 50 million Americans that have disabilities. And that we're starting to see that sustainable system, they call it. And the sustainable system means that we create learners that go back out in the workfai, workplace and give back to our community and to our towns and pay taxes and continue that continuous cycle. You can go into the local grocery store, the local restaurants now, the local places. You're seeing students of ours that have come through Merrimack High and gone through working with our transition coordinator, have positions of paid employment. And there's no better, greater success for me to walk in. And when, it may be pulling my cart back at Shaw's. It may be walking into Walgreens and being greeted by somebody, or to Walmart, or one of these, or, or the local restaurant, seeing the person behind the counter, or I get the wave. Those are true successes for, for us in our world. And the kids that are going off to four-year colleges, those are true successes in, in the world of Special Services. So, we can get caught in the numbers and the zeros and the compliance. But at the end of the day, I think that what's behind that is that sustainable system we're trying to create. So, some stats that I, that I talked about, about what, what do I look at sometimes? Current enrollments. Right now, as of August 17th, we have 689 kids that are currently in our NESIS, in our New Hampshire IEP system that looks at who are those kids that are identified in our district right now. That number has stayed pretty consistent over the course of time that I've been over at Student Services. It's fluctuated by 10 up and down, and we've been in there. But that's, that's a good thing, because we're staying consistent with the fact is that means that we are graduating kids. We are moving kids beyond the system. Yes, the number hasn't come probably steadily down. But however, it means that sustaining is a good thing. It's not also rising impactively. It means we're sustaining our system. In the summer, one of those reasons are, we've really had an amazing job done by our three ESY coordinators, Nancy Romero, Suzanne Wheeler, and Christine Reinhardt. They run our ESY program, extended years, extended school year program in our summer school. 231 kids this year, which is, which is a lot of kids that are in program. That's a wonderful thing, because it gives us an opportunity to give a lot of one-on-one attention to kids and a lot of remedial skill attention for students that may just need a little more boost and a little more help meeting those past goals or learn, or having a little, little more advance in their learning. So we're really trying to make those skills solid for them, so when they go into their next year. So that's a wonderful thing. And again, those that can, that have seen it or could ever get a chance to come see our summer variety show, it just is, you can't help but put a smile on your face to see those students get up there and perform on a stage when you know in the back of your head, some of these students who are walking across that stage weren't physically walking when they entered our district at three years old. And that's powerful. And I, and I give that message to say, that's how I'm measuring success sometimes in what we're doing. 18 kids this summer, we put out in the workforce. And we put out into summer internships, summer jobs through our Get Set program and our multi-disciplinary program at the high school. Again, something we're proud of. At the other end, our preschool population, 148 students enrolled at the end of the year. When I first sat here, you know, I'm moving into my seventh year. When I first sat here, six years ago, and I sat here and said, we're, we just made the expansion to Master Cola Elementary School. And we had, we had 20 kids in our program at Master Cola and another 25 over at Reed's Ferry. It's 45 children. And we've gone from 45 children to an expansion of 148 in the course of that time. We're proud of that. And it's okay to be proud of that, because it says, we are trying to reach those youngest learners. We're trying to get them into program. And we could, and believe me, if you build it, they will come. We, we have lists all the time, and kids wanna get into our preschool program. And that's because of the amazing job that that team has done and the amazing job our elementary principals and staff has done to make them part of the whole from pre-K to four classrooms, which, to schools, which is great. So let's talk about oversight for a little bit. And I gave you a handout on this, both the oversight and kind of the compliance over, over what the determination report talks about. It didn't show up wonderfully on the slide, so I gave it to you. But we are in the world of oversight when it comes to special ed. It starts with the Department of Education, USDAO, Office of Special Education and Rehabilitation Services, Office of Special Education Programs, New Hampshire Department of Education, Division of Educational Improvement, Bureau of Special Education, our own SAU, our local school district, and our local schools. There is a lot of oversight and looking at us to say, are you compliant with the criteria that's set forward by the federal government to make sure that you're, you're providing the programs needed for students with need? And that's a lot. So, what happens is, they put out a yearly determination point, report. And this year, you'll see what, what I gave in your packet is a 2015, 16 school year. So they're a couple of years behind. It takes some time to go through all those levels to say, "Here's your report." And you'll see that Merrimack School District meets all the requirements and purposes of the IDA based on established criteria. And that's awesome. That's great. And it's 10 years we've met this in a row. So, not only for my tenure as, as director, but previously, and all the coordinators that have come through with me in that time. To look around my team now, of eight coordinators, there's two that were there before me. I've rebuilt, then, we, we, not I, I be careful of that. We, as a district, and we is, have rebuilt that entire team, except for two. And that's pretty amazing to do that and still stay within this criteria. So some of those criteria we talked about. And I've hinted this, I, I'm not gonna walk through all of these in its entirety, because you have it in front of you. But I will say that different things that we are, we are looked upon are suspensions and expulsions. Preschool outcomes, are our kids making progress in preschool? And we have to take a lot of data on that. And there's a heavy requirement from every preschool classroom and teacher that our coordinator needs to do. Disproportionate representation. This basically means that have we, when it comes across racial and ethnic... This basically means that have we, when it comes across racial and ethical lines, are we equally proportioned? Do we have one ethnicity that we have identified, over identified? And we have to watch this and look at it, and especially in a, in an environment like Merrimack that doesn't have a lot of, a lot of ethnicity in our group. We have to make sure that, all right, so have we looked at that? Is it something that we track and monitor? And we do through our office each year. And then, again, do we have more than one category, I mean, a category of 10? Is there, is there, is there an overabundance of kids just identified with, with autism, or emotionally, or emotionally handicapping conditions, or L D, or math? Like, do we have one area that we have, like, out of our 680 kids, is there one area that's really over, over the top there? And we look at that and say, no. So it means that we are looking at all disabilities when, when we're doing this, when we're identifying kids. And then, child find. And again, I, we have had a, a wonderful coordinator amongst us, and Sheila DeMers, at our, at our preschool level, that has really done a wonderful job going out to our community. We have a new coordinator this year, Cara Cave, who comes from, from one of our early intervention institutions in New Hampshire that we've hired from there, and she has a good handle on this. So it's going to be to sustain this and support her in a way that can make sure she's going out in the community and reaching those new people, and re, and re, and continuing this charge that we've been on. Cara is, again, really knows the system, and I think she'll do very well at it. This also comes into every grade level. Every time that I hear that we have a student in, at a private school in our, in our area, or anytime there is a student who moves into our district, we have a responsibility at every level to make sure that we are seeing if this child needs more services than they have currently, or looking for the referral process with that child, in child find. Again, early childhood transition. This gets back into child find and going out, are we transitioning kids into school when they are three years old? And we're doing a lot of work to make that happen, and we are. And then secondary transition, what happens to kids once they leave our building? Are we helping them provide good transition plans, so they move on to what their, what, what their goals and dreams are? Are we be able to get them on, into colleges, either a community college or a four-year college? Are we able to move them on into the workplace? If not, if they are more multi-disabled, are we able to provide, help them hook up with gateways and area agencies to provide more services for them, so they are involved in doing that? So those are all the criteria. It's a lot. It's part of what, what we need to know in our office and be able to move forward. And it is, it is a measure of our success, as I just wanted to point out. It's not our only measure, in, in the way we work with children. So, what's next, and what are my, what are, what are we as an office of student services forecasting that we need to continue to do, and that we, you may see some budgetary implications for in the future? So, we need to build, continue to build home-to-school support and connect to community and, in community. And I think we need to do this, because it fits in with our mental health work. We talked in our mental health work earlier about really that parent outreach piece. It's no different in, in the bigger picture of student services in the district. We need to continue to work with our parent group. They're a, a growing group that's wonderful in, in the way that they really have taken an online presence. And they have used social media to really help them get the word out about our events, about what's out there in, in, not only in Merrimack, but around the state. They've connected to the parent, the parent information center, they've connected to the D O E, they've connected to other groups in other, other towns that are running events, and they've done some online podcasts this year, that we're trying to build that presence that maybe can't get people to meetings in our school, but we're looking at the how do we now still outreach and get the information out there. It's new to us, but we're learning together, and it's kind of exciting to be in that, in that world of doing that. And then, we have to continue to build our resources. I think that, that we can't go it alone. I think that we have to work with all the tools that we have in the community to start connecting. A lot of that work is being done with our mental health committee, that's connecting back to student services, but it's helping all students, and staying connected to our area agencies, and staying connected to Greater National Mental Health, and staying connected to the local pediatricians, and really working with them to create that system of care and relationships around us, around our community, in our town. And again, continue to strengthen our internal student services work by increasing the universal design. You'll hear more about this in the upcoming months, for a project that Mark and I, and Adam Carragher and Marsha McGill, will be working with the D O E as part of the Universal Design Network. And you'll hear about this in the coming months, that we're embarking on a, on a, a joint partnership between the two schools, the student, student services, and Mark with really understanding of curriculum design, and trying to work together to, to design systems in the tier-one supports for all students, so all students have what they need in the classroom. There'll be a lot of committee work, and we'll continue to do that. And then, along with that is my work around assistive technology. You know that I've been part in a, a two-year project around, and we presented to this board before, about working with assistive technology and aligning our assistive technology needs across the district, and also working with Nancy Rose on purchasing, and also embedding our classrooms with things like sound field systems that are built into our, built, built into our, our rooms, air conditioners that help with the temperature control within our rooms, doing some of these things that help the environment, so all students need, all students' needs are met from the get-go, when they walk in there, and it's there for them. So it doesn't matter by disability, it matters by ability in the classroom, and that's what we're trying to get to. And again, replacement. I'm out of mode right now, we're going to see in my budget probably some, some thoughts around replacement. I have about 95 iPads that I bought seven years ago, eight years ago, that unfortunately don't update to the new I O S system. Thank you, Apple. But they, they, it's what technology does. Doesn't mean that I'll get rid of them, I'll repurpose them, and I'll use them for online data collection that we need to do for our preschool outcomes that you heard about. I'll repurpose those machines and do that. But for inner students' hand who needs communication devices, speak to write, things like that, it won't update. It won't work anymore. So I'm getting to the point where I have to reuse some of those. Or look with Nancy, to talk to Nancy about, is the iPad the right device now? The more we move into, computers have really changed over those seven years, where they can become a tablet, they can become a laptop, they're much more versatile, they're much more typical, I think now, in our, in our day, to walk around with a, with a small laptop versus an iPad in our classrooms. So we're talking about those things, but by the time I get to budget, I'll have something defined with Nancy in, in doing some of that work. So, other things to forecast and look at. Related services, this is an area that, you know, in this past year, went through a lot with the transfer, transformation over to more of a for-profit company in some of our related service areas of speech, O T, and P T. This continues to be a cost area. And when I think about it, and it kind of, this is where sometimes I, I spin my wheels about how do I, how do I get into the cost area? You know, I always want to work with kids, but I'm also trying to be as physical respons- physically responsible as I can about some of these, some of these things that going, going on. And I'm looking at saying, really, what about these costs? And when I realized that these costs have risen, but what the goal of these costs are rising is that we're really working towards kids' independence, I've talked about, and really to create that system. And to do that, it takes some speech therapy, it takes some occupational therapy, it takes some physical therapy to really make our students with need more independent. So as we do that, I have to balance between the cost and the need. And I'm doing some of that, but what I'm saying is that I'm watching that cost go above our need right now. And I'm going to continue to work on that, and talk to Matt. Matt and I have talked a lot about this, to try to, how do we balance that cost? And look at, look at our vendors we're using and saying, is that, is that cost-effective in doing that, and doing some analysis? So we're doing some of that work, but you'll see that probably when I get to budget cycle and talk about that. And then, mental health. Supports, again, we talked about it, Julie and I talked a lot about this, and not a lot more to say here. We're looking at evaluations that have increased in, in the world of mental health. That's an area that really we don't talk about on mental health committee, but I, it comes into my world when it comes to time for school psychologists. And it takes a lengthy amount of time to evaluate a student for an emotional disability. And we're seeing more of that. We're seeing recommendations coming out of kids that are hospitalized, coming back to us, asking for a full eval. And that just takes time, you know, and, and doing that, and it takes time of a school psychologist that I'm contracting out to. So, I'm cautious of that in our budget. And then we're seeing tutoring costs that I'm forecasting are going to, I'm going to have to look at a, really, a scan with Matt over the last five years to see where we are, because I'm seeing in the last year a little bit of an increase because of hospitalizations and kids in need when it comes to mental health. They go in, and those aren't kids that always identify with disability. Those are kids that are in our buildings that just have things happen, and, and need to be hospitalized for some of their needs. And we have to pay the cost of tutoring for that, and those are in my budget. So you may see an area there. And then, as we continue to create our system of care, we talked about that coordinator of, of our wellness coordinator, and what that looks like, and that's what's in, a nutshell, forecasting, it's a lot. So, it all goes together. And I think that when I look at this, and I, I, I thought about this slide a lot when I was putting it together, and like, what am I trying to say in the message is that without all of these different areas, it'd be difficult to support, because if one of these is not there, you can't support each other, and you can't support the family and, and the students themselves. So it kind of says that if we're going to foster independence, we're going to work with kids, we're going to help all kids with need, need to put this whole big picture together of all the tools that we have. Questions?
I will put it out, so, so Andy?
I have questions tonight.
You do?
I do. So, John, thanks. It is always, it's good to see where we're at with this. Really what this is, is sort of a little bit of a guidance as we head into budget season, because obviously, you've teed up several things, both previously as well as through this. One of the questions that we get a lot as school board members is, why do we spend so much? Why are we buy, why are we bringing more tutors in? Why are we doing this? You alluded a little bit to some of the increased hospitalization for mental health that's requiring it. It'd be good when you get into sort of the budget to really put some scope and scale around exactly what you're seeing in terms of trending differences. What I want to make sure is that people understand that what we're doing is not because we feel good about doing it or that we like to do it, but these are things that are required of us as a district by whatever guidelines to do. And more importantly, and I think, and I don't want to misstate, but I remember talking to David Saygeen, as well as you over the past, that we're trying to make our district better functioning when it comes to this, to, to special services as well as mental health, so that we, we would do less out-of-district placements when we can do the services in, because it's obviously more cost-effective to do that. I mean, there'll always be out-of-district placements with severe disabilities or other things. But I think the trending, at least as of a couple of years ago, was the out-of-district placement for things that we could do in-house was reduced, so we could do more in, and do more integration with kids into the classrooms and into the, the main flows, so that they're more successful. So, that's the story that I think, if it's still true, that we want to, that I'd like to see as part of the whole budgeting process, because I don't want people to think that we're going above and beyond and making Merrimack different, or just doing, I think, a better job at it, trying to be more efficient. And even though it might sound like we're hiring more tutors, we may have less out-of-district replacements and save money overall in the end.
Right. And I think that you agree, a great point, and what we're seeing the trend to is, as we build our system of care, what I am seeing is less residential placements, and I have, as a state, decline over things. And I can show some of those, those numbers. It's hard when I get into numbers, because there, there, there's some that are just, there's one, so I don't want to say one on something, because there's a community member out there that I would be identifying some information, so I'm very cautious to keep confidentiality in that.
Right, but you can.
But there is a trend of definitely, some of this work we've done over the last four years, I've seen where I may have placed farther, I may have placed in more of a long-term care facility. We're seeing less, more local placements, more things within our area, more able to bring kids back in. And, and we are seeing those trends, and that, that, again, that's a celebration of our success.
And it's an important factor to bring up, because I think that as we invest all the money in these, in, in all the pairs and the tutors and the programs, if we can show that that's trending, so that we're more in a control of our own destiny, so to speak, that's goodness. That's what we want to do, that's what local control's all about, so.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other? So the only thing I would close on is something that you usually hit every year and you didn't. And you really went over it from a point of, we want to do this, and we do, and we should, and we, we do it well. But what should be lost is we have to do it. Not just because it's the right thing to do, but because it's required in such a federally regulated, stringent environment, your, your flexibility isn't really there. But when you do it, you do it with a whole heart and a focused mind, and that just makes our outcomes that much more successful. So, as we talk about special education, I know it comes up that it's something that most don't understand. I was, I was definitely not, when I came on the board, someone who understood the breadth and scope of what you do, and how much work goes into it, and how many resources are required, and, you know, what could be considered a special education. So you're, as you're saying, a child in the hospital, even if you broke a leg, is now under student services. You don't understand it. A child that's in Sununu Correctional, like, student, I, I know it has a youth center.
Youth center.
I couldn't remember, I'm so sorry. So Sununu Youth Center, who's there for correctional reasons, we're paying that education locally. It's not the state, it's not like a state prison where you send the state and the state pays for it. It's, we pay for that child's education locally. So those are, those are things that, you know, this is informative, but just where you think that we're just taking what I would call broad liberties, we're not. We're doing what has to be done to get the job done the way it needs to be done, and has to be done. And for those who think that, you know, it's, it's being done liberally, it's being done succinctly, precisely, but just done that well, that people don't, can't see the difference.
And Shannon, thank you for bringing that up too. And I think the point too is that every one of these decisions involves the parents, and the parents are part of that I P team, and the parents sit at the table, and the parents help with these decisions, and the parents have a, a, a large voice in our, in our, in our district. And that, that comes out through our parents' involvement survey too, when they talk about their connectedness to the work that we do. And I think that that's important. And I think that, to say that, that where my budget's unique, and I talk about this when it comes to budget time, that it's built meeting by meeting, student by student, situation by situation. And I'm at the end of that, to calculate, put that together, and provide what's needed for our students.
Absolutely. You just do it with such pride that you can't tell what's required and what's, what's just done with great passion. So that's, that's the gift that we have in Merrimack, and the talent that we, we employ. So, I give you kudos for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Excellent. Are there any other questions from the board? Seeing none, we know we're going to see you again budget time, but you're welcome anytime. Thanks, John. And now we're on to item number five, which is the request to offer teacher survey related to teachers' emotional intelligence and vulnerability to stress. And Mark is going to take over this item, but the goal, when setting up this agenda item, of course, whenever we have a survey request come to us as a board, we usually have the one requesting the survey here. And that wasn't possible. We're meeting once a month, so we had one chance to really, you know, get the calendar set. And the one who would be conducting the survey is in a plane. So, in that, he asked, you know, knowing that we weren't going to get that, we asked for him to send just kind of an outline, like an introduction, as he would have done if he was at our table. And if you indulge me, I will read that tonight. So, the email was, Dear Merrimack School Board, thank you for your time this evening. I'm writing to provide clarification regarding my request to collaborate with the Merrimack School District. I had hoped to visit with you by phone this evening, but I will be in flight from Chicago to Houston during your meeting. I hope this written communication will suffice. It will be best to understand my request for collaboration in the context of current research regarding the importance of social-emotional learning in schools. A great many studies can be summarized by Joseph Durlak's 2012 meta-analysis of over 200 social-emotional learning programs. He and his colleagues at Loyola, oops, Loyola University, found overwhelming evidence to support the efficacy of social-emotional learning as a vehicle to increase, sorry, both academic and behavioral performance in the primary and secondary students. His meta-analysis confirms what we've long known intuitively, namely, that our students do their best work in the context of healthy relational environments. To that end, my colleagues in clinical practice and I began to develop a social-emotional learning curriculum for both teachers, in parentheses, the HeartSmart classroom, and administrators, the HeartSmart leader. The content of both curricula is summarized in my forthcoming book, HeartSmarts, Why Social-Emotional Learning is Essential to Student Development, and what we can do to develop it. As we developed the curriculum, the psychologist and psychometrician, I hope I did that right, and me, began to think along the lines of assessment. Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could actually measure what we were proposing to teach? Wouldn't it be wonderful if we could actually measure what we were proposing to teach? I initiated collaboration with the Texas A&amp;M's College of Education to create such a measure, a three-domain profile that assesses personality style, capacity for emotional intelligence, and capacity for adaptive stress management. These three domains represent the most essential aspects of social and emotional learning. Doctor, this is not easy, Mayagasan Yun, sorry, Dr. Yun, of the Department of Educational Psychology, will be analyzing data to establish the instrument's psychometric properties, and Dr. Gwen Webb-Hassan of the Department of Educational Administration/Human Resource Development will be consulting as to the instrument's cultural relevance and sensitivity. Assessment results will inform the test taker of the strengths and weaknesses associated with their individual personality profile, the strengths and weaknesses of their inter, and interpersonal skills, and their innate capacity to manage stress adaptively. Our hope is that the instrument will play a critical role in empowering educators to lead at campus and classroom levels with ever-increasing levels of emotional intelligence, a factor that research soundly validates as the most effective pedagogical strategy for students. I'm going to have to talk to Adam when we meet him about these words, on camera. So, our, our goal is to, is norm the instrument only with educators, so that any educator who completes the profile will have results that compare them only with other educators. We are seeking a normative sample that will reflect the demographic findings of the U.S. Department of Education 2015-2016 National Teacher and Principal Survey. The collaboration will cost nothing to any of the districts involved in the sample. What is in it for the district is that during the spring semester of 2019, teachers who take the 20-minute test online will immediately receive a report with their results, outlines of strengths and weaknesses, and recommendations for personal growth. What's in it for us is that we will grow our normative sample to establish the instrument's innate psychometric properties, such as reliability and validity. We will never ask any teacher for a name, we will simply ask for basic demographic data, such as years of experience, current grade level taught, sex, and race. All data we collect will be held under non-disclosure agreements for the few individuals who have, who will have access to the resulting data set. To date, we have commitments from schools, school districts in Texas, Arizona, and Indiana. We would love to add New Hampshire to the sample. On behalf of my clinical and research team, thank you again for your time this evening, and I would be happy to field any follow-up questions by email or telephone later this week. Best wishes, Adam. And that's Dr. Adam Sands, psychologist from the Texas A&amp;M. So at that point, he does apologize for not being able to make it, so he sent this to me this afternoon, which is why it was not in your packets, but I read it into the record, so we would all be on page, even though I mangled probably half the really fancy words, but did my best. And on that, I will pass over to Mark, if you can frame out the rest of the, the plan.
Sure. So as long as we're, just on Dr. Sands, I just, I think it'd be interesting for the board to know a little bit about his background. So he earned his PhD in school psychology from Texas A&amp;M University. He completed his pre-doctoral clinical training, under a fellowship appointment to Harvard Medical School, and has a post-doctorate in clinical psychology from the Alpert Medical School at Brown University. He also earned a doctorate of Ministry in Pastoral Counseling from the Graduate Theological Foundation, with residency at Christ Church College in Oxford University. He currently serves as the Clinical Director of the Oakwood Collaborative in College Station, Texas, the Counseling and Assessment Clinic that he founded in 2003. So, the, the question has to do initially with how we came to know Dr. Sands. So, colleagues in New Hampshire who knew about Dr. Sands' work before us, brought him to speak to a group of superintendents at our annual retreat a few years ago, and at that time, he was incredibly interesting, excellent speaker, and wonderful presenter, and that coincided with the work that John and Julie just presented to you. John and Julie, I wish they were here, there's actually no one in the room at the moment, but I wish that there were, because I would love to be able to credit John and Julie for bringing the issue of readiness to learn and readiness to teach into our culture in Merrimack. They have done incredible work to help sensitize us to what it is actually that we are experiencing in so many of our classrooms, which is wonderful students with a variety of challenges that we just, the scope and the character of which we really hadn't seen before. And that's presenting challenges that teachers haven't experienced before. And so, rather than turn our back on our obligation to our students, we're trying to use whatever tools are, are at our disposal to bring them to bear, so that we can give our students the best shot at a good education that we can, that is our responsibility. So, knowing that this was the context, we approached Dr. Sands and said, we would love for you to come to Merrimack to speak to our teachers at our August Academy. And so, he agreed, and he came and was the keynote speaker and presenter for two days last year at our August Academy. He was incredibly well-received, received just innumerable emails and comments from teachers over the weeks after, that they really appreciated his message. The message was off of the, a book that he wrote called, The Power of a Teacher: Restoring Hope and Well-Being to Change Lives. And the spirit of his work in there that he was sharing is that teachers need to take care of themselves, teachers need to make sure that they are healthy and, and strong, and able to give their best to a teacher and the, to a student. And the metaphor that he uses frequently is, those of us who have flown know that we're always told, if there's loss of cabin pressure, to make sure that we take the oxygen and give it to ourselves first. And that's kind of counter, counterintuitive, because if you're traveling with a child, your inclination is to make sure that you give the child what he or she needs right away, but the theory behind that is, if you do that, and therefore you suffer a loss of ability consciousness and ability to help the child, then you will not be good for the child later on. And so, you're advised to make sure that you are well enough to be able to continue to serve your student, your, your passenger. And so, he frequently talks in those terms, to say, we have to work very hard to care for our teachers. So that's the context for how we came to know Dr. Sands. And in the year since he left us, he has maintained contact with us in Merrimack, because he was very impressed with the work that John and Julie have done around mental health and mental health awareness, trying to help us to grapple with the scope of the challenge that we face, and to meet our responsibility to face that challenge. And he has, because of that, has felt like he's wanted to stay in touch with us. So, just about a week or so ago, he contacted us and shared with, with me, with us, the next work that he's doing, which Chair Barnes just alluded to, the HeartSmart Teacher and the HeartSmart Leader, and is in the process of developing a, an assessment that would be used as a tool for educators alone to use to reflect on their ability to do a variety of things, not least to handle stressful environments, to be, to be able to be bounce-back resilient and, and from challenges and so on and so forth. And so, his request was, knowing Merrimack as he does, thinking that it would be an opportunity for us to be able to continue our work, and at the same time, support him in his work. And so, what I would like to do right now, before I continue, is I just would like to read the memo that I, I provided to the board, because I think it addresses some of, some questions that at least one member of the community has raised. At last year's August Academy, we were fortunate to have Dr. Adam Sands as our keynote speaker. Dr. Sands is a professor of psychology at Texas A&amp;M University, and the author of the bestselling book, The Power of a Teacher. In the year since his universally well-received keynote, we have maintained contact with Dr. Sands, in the hopes of future powerful connections with him and his work. He is soon to complete a professional development program for teachers called the HeartSmart Leader, which includes a personality assessment specifically designed for educators, that will help them gain valuable insight into their own social and emotional profiles. Dr. Sands' goal is to empower teachers to be more effective in the classroom, as they better understand their strengths, challenges, and the emotional triggers that inevitably and deeply impact performance. He has asked teachers in the Merrimack School District to voluntarily take his Sands' profile assessment to help him gain valuable data about the instrument, as he concludes beta-testing on the instrument before it goes live in mid-winter. In other words, Merrimack is one of the relatively few school districts in the country that Dr. Sands and his team at Texas A&amp;M are asking to work with, to test the survey one final time before it goes to market. The assessment will take approximately 20 minutes of, of teacher's time, and can be completed anytime during the months of September and October. Teachers will receive immediate feedback after completion of the survey concerning their profile, and as a part of the final beta-test of the instrument. Additionally, as a thank you for participation, Dr. Sands has agreed to return to Merrimack at his expense during the upcoming school year to, to train our leadership team on the use and application of his newly-developed tool. Given our district's focus on students' mental health, we see this as an important tool to support our educators as well, with the goal of more impactful instruction. We respectfully ask the board to waive the two-week rule by granting this request at Monday's board meeting. So I want to just speak to the rationale for that. Next week begins our August Academy, and it is the only time that we have the opportunity for our entire staff to be present in one room at one time. And so, when Dr. Sands brought this to our attention, we were hoping that we would have an opportunity to take advantage of the fact that we will have all of our teachers together next week, to raise awareness about this offer, this possibility. And we didn't want to pursue this without having the vetting that we always do about surveys with the board. It's been the board's directive to us, and also the superintendent as well, that we talk to the board about any survey we put in front of teachers. This was the plan all along tonight, as evidenced by the agenda item. And we didn't want to say anything to teachers when we have them, without first speaking to the board about it. So the request to waive the two-week rule is merely evidence of the fact that we have teachers coming before our next board meeting. That said, there is no other reason why we would ask for that, and if it's the board's wish for any reason, that we, that you not grant the two-week rule, that's perfectly fine, and we will just use another avenue. If the board should allow us to move forward with this, we would use another avenue to communicate this opportunity. I just want to stress that this is an entirely voluntary, entirely voluntary tool, that teachers can, if they wish, utilize, so that they can add that to their toolbox of instructional strategies and self-awareness, that will help them to be a more informed practitioner. There is no other reason, there is no other goal, it is purely that. And as Chair Barnes read in, Dr. Sands' email to her and to the board, there is no connecting information. We do not know who responds, we, they are not asked for their name or any other identifying information, they are just a gender and a year of service, years of service. And so, that is really the request. I just would sort of, just focus just once more on the, the context, because the context matters. We are working very hard in Merrimack to try to meet the challenge of every, of every student, every year that they come to us, and we're fortunate enough to have them. And in as much as we try to support teachers, students, with their challenges, whether they're academic, or social-emotional, or behavioral, or, or any of them, we similarly do well when we try to support our teachers, by providing them with tools that help them to be more aware of what makes them tick, and what makes them be as effective as they can be in the classroom. I'll say it again, this is a tool for teachers only. But it is part of the job that we have in Merrimack, to do our best for our students and our teachers. And we felt gratified to be able to have a connection with a, really a renowned scholar like Dr. Sands, and a renowned university like Texas A&amp;M. So, so I'm more than happy to speak to you about anything that you might ask relative to this request.
So far, I've seen Naomi, and Andy, and Cindy, and Brenda's. So, we'll go in that order, since that's how it's all the hands. So, Naomi, if you want to lead?
This is pretty interesting stuff. Two parts to it. First, the content itself and the idea that the socio-emotional, let me say that a little differently, teaching is a high-stress and high-energy profession. People sometimes don't realize the extent to which that is true, and I think that anything that we can do to help teachers understand how they function best, and how we can provide them with circumstances that will help them function best, is, is only to everybody's advantage. I wanted to almost hop past that, because it's so self-apparent that it's a good thing, this particular tool, and my guess is others will ask about it, and go straight to confirming what has already been said, privacy. So tell me if I've understood this correctly. Teachers will be given a link, or some way of taking this online, they will not give their, they can either choose to go there or not. So anybody who doesn't feel like it, just won't go there, and won't take it. Once those who have chosen to go there, they won't be asked for their name, or any information, just their gender, and how many years, so that can be used for norming of the survey, which is part of the point of it?
I'm going to just clarify, it's gender, grade taught, grade level taught, years of service, and race.
Okay, those four things. So far, so good?
Yes.
Okay, so, those four things will then go to the individuals who are putting together this information, we won't receive it.
Correct.
Okay, even those four pieces of information will not come back to the district?
Correct.
It will only go to specific individuals there who have limited access and are working under a non-disclosure agreement?
Correct.
Okay, so we will never have access to that information at all?
Ever.
Okay, thank you very much.
Excellent. So I hope it didn't kill your flow when I cut you out. Good, okay, thank you. Andy?
So, to continue that thought, which is, it was a perfect segue into my questions, because I think that it's important for everybody to understand that what this is, initially is, the key is, I mean, I'm in tech, and when I saw the word "beta-test," it immediately said to me, this is something that they're developing, and they're trying to do a good cross-section of educators that understand the benefit of wanting to be involved in something like this, of which Merrimack teachers are one of that category. So, it immediately told me that this isn't something that the district is going to use as a tool to gather data and understand the teacher's mental wellness or anything like that. This is a beta-test for them developing the tool, strictly voluntary, teachers can choose to participate or they won't. And as Naomi has indicated, it's completely anonymous, completely confidential, there's no data that we would glean, or that they would glean and put up on any billboard or anything like that.
That is 100% accurate.
Okay. The one question I had is, in reading the, the memo that you applied here, is it said, and I'm going to read the sentence. Additionally, as a thank you for participation, Dr. Sands has agreed to return to Merrimack at his expense during the year to train our leadership team on the use and application of his newly-developed tool. Now, I think that if somebody reads that sentence, they may think that, once the tool is operational, and it's out there, something, to be used, that, that there may be different utilizations of that tool that could pass data back to the district, or something like that. So I guess, my, my comment, it's not really a question, because you may not really know the answer, but maybe if you do, that's great. But I would imagine that any use of that tool as something that the district would do, that would, would have, would ever pass data, would be something you would come back to the board to discuss, if it ever got to that point. And that the request here, that you're, you're asking of us, is simply to allow voluntary teachers to participate in the beta-test for Dr. Sands. Is that accurate?
Yes. I can address your first question, though, if you want. I can address your first question though, if you want.
That's, I wanted to give you the option of yes or no. There was a question, he found it, so.
Yeah, yeah. So, so in the, the part of my memo that you read where he offers to come back and train, what that specifically means is that if you, there are, at your table, there's just, you know, we couldn't, Matt would kill me if I printed all this, you know, out too much. So I, I, but at your table, there's more about the science personality domain, and it talks about several domains. Personality domain, the emotional intelligence domain, and so on and so forth. And there are brief descriptors about what, what the tool could reveal to a user of the tool. And so his training, for lack of a better word, would be to provide guidance to our leadership team, or however we constructed it, merely to say, this is how you would go about interpreting the tool that you have elected to use. This is never the intention to base anything off of what would be discovered by the user of the tool, but it would be a way to say, I have my results, I know how, I know what my potential strengths and my potential weaknesses are relative to the personality domain, I know what my action points to limit weaknesses are, I know what my action points to limit bias are, but, but tell me how to interpret the high score, 80 to 100, low score, 0 to 25. Help me to understand how I would use this as a tool, should I choose to use it as an educator? And so the training would be merely a way to articulate how educators would, on their own, utilize this tool. So it would be no different than giving somebody, you know, a new-fangled hammer and then saying, you can use this hammer if you want to use it, and I will come and help you learn how to use the hammer, and then you decide if you want to use it or not.
But to clarify one point that I think Andy was asking, so I'm going to just make sure, because if not, let's just reiterate it anyway. He said, would the data come to light? I think was kind of how you put it. Would the data kind of come back on how it was collected by doing this training? Was that kind of a question of yours? Because I didn't hear that in the presentation.
Well, yeah, I mean, the thing is, is that whenever, when they talk back about coming to, to do training, what I, it sounds to me like is that he would not only offer training to the teachers as to how to interpret, but he might leave information that we as a district could provide to teachers that may take it in the future to understand how to interpret their results, right?
So, so I, that, I've, I've told you the best that I can about how he has described what he would, you know, would do, what he would do if he came to Merrimack, but he wouldn't do anything that we wouldn't want him to do. But I just want to be clear, because this is, this really is very important, given some of the concern that's been expressed. This is entirely a tool for teachers to use. So teachers are going to get information if they choose to use the tool, and it is between the piece of paper that they get and themselves. That's it. It will never be used as a foundation for professional development. It will never be used to evaluate job performance, ever. And, and the fact that it even needs to be said implies perhaps like, well, that was considered, but, but, but put away. Never was, never will be. So whatever training Dr. Seines would do would be merely a way to help those who choose to use the tool to understand how to use the tool. That is it.
Okay. Are you also, Andy?
No.
Okay, and I think we're to Brandy, Cindy and Brandy.
So Dr. Seines was a person who came, worked with our teachers two year, a year ago, last year. And so this survey would be, he's reached out to us, is one of several districts that he has worked with around the country, and he has asked if we want to offer this as a tool for our teachers, unrelated to us, so as you said, directly between the teacher and the Dr. Seines and his team, and never will be part of us, never will be in our files, never at any kind of personal, personally identifiable information. And it is simply anonymous with some demographic information that you've described, and it's, so the idea would be that when you go to August Academy next week, you would see, remember Dr. Seines? This is the tool he's offered to you. Take it or leave it. If you want to do it and work with whatever the results are and how that might help you in your own personal development for yourself, then go ahead. If not, no big deal.
That is almost verbatim how I would say it.
Okay. Secondly, have you spoken to any teachers about it, to the teachers' union, or has it been discussed with them at all?
No, it's an excellent question. This is, this came to us about a week ago, and, and again, timing was such that we thought, oh, well, we've got a board meeting next week, so let's present this to the board to get its approval, because I think anybody who, who follows us knows that the board very much wants to know what surveys go before our teachers and our students. And so in that spirit, we opted to bring, opted to use this board meeting rather than a subsequent one to talk about it. And so that's, you are the first group and that has heard about this. And again, I just want to be clear, I, we're not wedded to the two-week rule, other than the fact that we did not feel it appropriate to say anything to teachers without having spoken to the board first, because we know what the board wants about that. And so the timing was such that we meet with the board on the 20th, happens that seven days later, eight days later, we begin our August Academy, and so therein lay the timing. But absolutely, if the board would wish to have two weeks or more, or whatever the board's prerogative is, I mean, we, that's exactly what we'll do. So, but, so there is no pressure other than that we will not say anything to, to teachers about this in more detail unless we get approval from the board.
Okay, so I would recommend that if it is approved by the board, that you would have a conversation in kind of at that, before you would throw that out there at the academy. That would just be a suggestion that I would have. Shannon, that letter, you read through it very quickly. There was something about three domains. Could you read?
Again, hold on, sorry. So I blew up the font, so it wasn't going to be so rough.
Oh, is it?
It's in the handout.
Is it, this, the big one?
The three domains represent the most essential aspects of social, emotional learning. We'll be analyzing data. I'm looking at two.
I have it if it would help.
Oh, yeah, it would.
Yep. So the first domain is the personality domain.
There it is.
And that's broken down into two parts, openness to experience and conscientiousness. The second is the personality domain. I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, that's, then it's, I'm sorry, then it's extraversion.
Or just the three?
There's just the three domain, yeah. And then there's emotional intelligence domain, and then there is stress management domain.
Thank you. And then do we also have then who exactly would analyze and process? I think you said two names, I think, from that letter.
It would be clinicians from Texas A&amp;M who are part of his team. So I just want to be clear about that. Teachers, any teacher who elects to take advantage of this tool would be in receipt of their profile. And because there would be no training to this point, they would, you know, it, it would be interesting, but then, but then, you know, that would be where Dr. Seines might come in and fill in the gaps, like, what does this mean that I got? But in any event, teachers, individual teachers, no one else, would get these results. The, and then the part that helps Dr. Seines and Texas A&amp;M is that they get to test whether the instrument has, you know, whether it's, whether it's worked in terms of the validity, all the things that Chair Barnes mentioned, but also things like, did you get your, your results back in the time that we said? Because he's working with folks at A&amp;M to try to get a result back within, let's say, half an hour of pressing submit. So if a teacher, you know, you know, you know, they're trying to, and they know when the result would get sent, so then they were just, you know, is this working the way we want it to work? And that's the point of a, of a beta test, because he's trying to use this one last time before it goes sort of live.
So talk to me a little bit about the anonymity. So if, if it's anonymous and the data that's provided, how does he get, how does he get results back to the test taker? Is it right online in whatever screen they took it on? They don't close, you know?
I can't, I, what I, the, I think that what he said about that, I, I just don't have it in front of me, but is that this data, which is just race, gender, years of experience, and
Grade.
And grade level, goes to, so it's, you know, person X, female, with 15 years of experience teaching, you know, third grade, whatever. And then those, those responses from that anonymous individual goes to the team at A&amp;M to review, you know, how well this whole thing is sort of working. That's it. That's it.
Okay, so I was just trying to make, see if they were getting responses back, how they would get those responses back.
I, I couldn't tell you the, if this is, if this is a question that you have, I can certainly follow up with Dr. Seines.
Yeah, and I, I don't have so much of the question, as long as, you know, we have the understanding, from my perspective anyways, that it is completely anonymous, as said. So, you know, if there's a tool or mechanism to do that, I mean, I would like to know the answer, but I don't, I mean, the important thing to me to know is that it is anonymous and optional. Those are probably the two biggest, most important things.
And I would, and I would say that his professional reputation rests on his honesty and integrity on that particular issue.
Yeah, yeah, interesting that. It would, it would have to be.
Do you have a follow-on question to that, Naomi?
Not so much a follow-up, as leaping in of my usual mention of IRB, which I seem to always have to mention at some point when a survey comes forward. I have no way of knowing this for sure, but given that he's faculty at an accredited university, he would have to have gone through a process where his own institution is, is backing him up as far as the process that he's put forward.
Thank you from the peer. Do you have any other questions, Cindy?
I think that covers it. Thank you.
Excellent. And Miranda Brandy?
So I just want to reiterate and make sure, I think we've all sort of said it in a different way, but I just would like to, to fully understand and clarify that at no point after the results have been given to each teacher that voluntarily takes this assessment, that a collaborative, a full report will not be given based on all of the Merrimack teachers that opt in to take this and voluntarily take it. At no point will our administration ever receive a full report of everybody that did take it and where we, not necessarily a full report of who took it, but what the responses were and where we compare to anybody else that's taken this, correct?
That's 100% correct. We will, not, not only will we not receive a full report, there is no, there is no report other than that which goes to the person who voluntarily elected to take it.
Okay.
There is none.
Just wanted to clarify?
No, I appreciate it.
Okay.
Marge?
I think I have to say that when this was made known to Mark and me from Dr. Seines, why we wanted to put this forward before you and before our educators is because of the response we saw toward him last summer. So he was impactful. I want to reiterate that Mark especially got emails from educators who have been in Merrimack a long time, who talked in terms of the power of his presentation and the book, The Power of a Teacher, and how significant that was. I would say we've now done many August Academies, and we're always trying to see if one is better than the next, but I have to say that he resonated, just his presentation and his background knowledge. And he shared with us at the time that he was going to go forward with a project. He talked more in terms of the culture, and he talked in terms of what he had experienced in Merrimack and how positively received he was, and just, you know, you can, you don't think you can build a relationship in a short time, but it was just that positive. So we were hopeful that he would be in contact with us at some point in time. So the fact that this comes forward now, I think we are always looking for professional opportunities, and it is not every day in the week as an educator that you get to be part of someone's research or someone that's coming forth with another book or curriculum or whatever. So we look at this as a professional development opportunity, but the beauty of it is, you have choice, you know? It's kind of like, because you're in Merrimack, because you're employed here, you have the opportunity for, you choose it or you don't. But it would never have come to us had we not gone through this experience. So I think it's not like it just came out of the blue. There is a significant tie here, and I think that's important to state as well.
Epic of Andy than Cindy? Oh, you had, it's still yours until you give it up, so keep going.
So, that's a great lead-in to my next question. I agree with you that I think this is a tremendous opportunity for those that choose to voluntarily take it. I think it's, it's a great opportunity for those that want to take it. However, it, it seems that this, we keep focusing on, on how anonymous it will be and how involved the administration will be. I'm going to go the other direction, and I'm going to say, what if we have an overwhelmingly positive response by our teachers, and they are looking at this as a great opportunity for them and a way that we can incorporate this perhaps into their professional development? Is this opportunity limited to right now?
So I appreciate, I appreciate what you're asking. I can't, I can't forecast, you know, about the future. This is still, you know, new, and we're trying to process sort of what it possibly is now. What, what I can tell you is that any, there would be, we would, we would never ask for any kind of personal information that came off of that. So we'd never say, you know, Mrs. Munoz, can you tell us how you, what you scored on your personality profile, and then we'll build a professional development plan off of that, or if maybe 50 teachers kind of had a similar profile, then we'll build, that will, that would never happen. What, what would be contemplated, I suppose, in the future would be if teachers wanted to seek their own professional development, you know, off of their findings. Like if I find that I am an introvert and my introverted tendencies cause me to be reluctant to reach out to parents, when reaching out to parents would be really helpful, then I might, on my own, seek to find some professional development that could provide me with some mechanism to get stronger in that area. But I can't conceive of a situation whereby we would ever, as a district, ever know that. It wouldn't be our business to know that. There is a lot that the district provides for professional development for the broad group of teachers, like for instance, next Tuesday, we're going to be having professional development about our new math, newly adopted secondary math program, and then our second year of our elementary math program. So that's what we do. But it would be impossible and not even appropriate to prescribe for teachers what they would need to be even better educators. And we always talk in Merrimack about trying to create the conditions where people can be better at what they do, and I think we're very careful to say, this does not imply that people are not good already at what they do. But I would think that the board would be skeptical of administration who said But I would think that the board would be skeptical of administration who said, you know, there's nothing for our teachers to do, we're just, we've got it figured out. I mean, that, that just isn't, that isn't accurate, and it, and it doesn't mean we don't employ top-flight people. Um, but there's always room for improvement. So the best that I could see is that an individual teacher would take this result if he or she would opt to take the tool, and then off of that, make their own choices, uh, about what they might do to continue to perfect their craft.
But is this opportunity to take this, is it just limited to right now, or is it once the tool goes live? Is it going to be available to additional teachers that maybe couldn't take it during September and October?
Right. So, um, I don't know the answer to that question. My understanding is that this is, um, part of a program that, um, Dr. Seines, I mean, it's going to go to market, and so at some point, there will be a, you know, you purchase the book or you purchase the program. And so we, I guess, have an opportunity to have those of our teachers who elect to take this tool to do so at no cost to themselves, um, and get the benefit of whatever information it provides for them to make their own choices for free, whereas in the, in the outline years, you know, there will be a cost to this.
Okay.
Right.
So I think I had Andy then Cindy, but Cindy's going first, because you're relinquishing. Go for it.
Mine's pretty quick. Um, so I just wanted to reiterate too, there's no cost to the district for this, there's no cost to our teachers. Um, and then there's this added benefit because of, um, a highly accredited or credit, a high, a person of high, with high credentials, um, coming and working with us some more as a follow-up at his own cost. So there's an added benefit there that, um, it's not, the taxpayers are not responsible for, um, at all.
100% accurate.
Okay. Thanks.
Andy?
So, I'd like the board to bear with me for a minute as I tell a little bit of a story. I get, promise you, I promise you the point at the end is pertinent. So, in the discussion that we've seen with the community about this potential evaluation, there's been a lot of conclusions drawn about how does this relate to things that are done in, in industry, such as Myers-Briggs, the Insights test, sort of the evaluation emotional within the working outside of teaching. Most of us that have been in industry have been working in the industry for nearly 40 years, have ta, taken several of these evaluations over the years, and largely they're part of team building rather than individual information. So not only do you get the information, but your peers get information and your management gets information. Three years ago, I was, we went through another one, it's called Insights. So anybody that's been in industry, Insights is the one where they make you, they ask you a whole bunch of questions that are emotional-based and how you would react. And there's four colors that are the end, and I'm just going to read it really quick to, for context. There's red, which means you're competitive, demanding, determined, strong-willed, and purposeful. There's blue, which means you're cautious, precise, deliberate, questioning, formal. There's yellow, which says that you're sociable, dynamic, uh, demonstrative, enthusiastic, and perva, pervasive. And then there's green, which means you're caring, encouraging, sharing, patient, and relaxed. So you, as a person, get your results at the end, um, so you can know how you are as a person emotionally and the way that you work in industry. I went to a meeting where we had all taken this test with 50 other product managers, that's my, what I do for a living, in a team-building room. The instructor at the behest of our management wanted everybody to take their results and make it known to everybody else in the room. And the way that they did it is, is that you came out with an average color score. So they made all 50 people go into the corner of the room that matched their color. A large number of people in our group were red, fiery, proactive, A-type personalities. A number were blue, you know, they had this sort of cautious, precise, but they were deliberate. Number of them were yellow, which were sort of more of that mix. And there was one person that was green. That was me. I was in a corner, all by myself, with all the others in the rooms, laughing at me. Why are you green? Oh, you're too touchy-feely, or whatever. I'm one of the most effective product managers in our organization because I look at the big picture, I understand. Me as a person, knowing that about myself makes myself more effective. When you've exposed that to my management and to my other, other peers, it's viewed as a negative, because they view you as being weak or not effective or influenced too easily. When in fact, that's not true, but that's the perception. So as I was going into this discussion and reading what you did, and I've researched this over the weekend before any of this stuff blew up, my big concern was, is this confidential to the person? Because there's nothing more powerful than getting emotional input, or an input back on the way you think about things, the way you approach things, to make you effective as a teacher or an instructor, as a worker, or whatever it is that you do. But the danger is when it gets used more broadly. And in my mind, what you've shared with me today says, this is for the teacher. This is allowing them to voluntarily take it, take the data, learn more if they want to, take it for what it is. You won't know, their peers won't know, other teachers won't know, there's no, nothing there. I see nothing in this beta evaluation that they're doing that would make me not want to allow this, to waive the two-week rule, because I think the teachers should be encouraged to do this based on what it is. So the bottom line is, is that I've done my research, everybody here's done their research, we're all going to make our decision on whether we waive the two-week rule or not, but to say that we're not prepared and we don't think this thing through is other BS. Thanks.
Somebody wanted the last word. So, and honestly, I think you echoed a lot of what I had to say, except I didn't know you were a green guy until now. Um, so, so, but in the same token, you're the one, uh, just to play off of you a little bit, um, you've been at the same desk for how many years in your career?
Forty years, same company.
Same company, different names, starting with digital. So it seems like green might be the right color to get the job done. So, on that note, um, so congratulations, Mr. Green. So, but, but to that, you know, I'm, I'm going to get on my soapbox, I do it every once in a while, you guys either have fun with it or you don't, um, depending on who you are. But the one thing we have to do as a board, we were, we were hired to do a job, and we're doing it tonight to an empty room, which is fine, we're okay with it, the work still needs to get done. Social media is not where we need to get our thoughts. Content, data, conversation, presentation, insight, probing, this is where we need to get our data to make decisions. What disappoints me about tonight's agenda item is we had to put on the backburner the opportunity that we have, and we had to spend more time talking about what the, what the people who have not called to, called us, written us, or visited tonight. We had one visitor, and, you know, we welcomed him and, um, and appreciate that he did come in, but that's it. We, as a board, were hired to do a job, and sometimes it's a, as you can see in this room, if the camera can see it, it's a very lonely job. Facebook is not where we're going to make our decisions here, if we're doing our jobs well. We need to represent 27,000 people in this community, and we need to do it with an open mind and clear thought. And what we should be looking at instead of Facebook is our code of ethics that we sign every year after our elections. That's what needs to guide us, and that's what does guide us. Um, Andy, I think you absolutely, I agree with you, I think that everything presented tonight says we should do this. It's an opportunity that we should be thanking Dr. Seines for, because I finally said his name right. Um, and sorry for that, but we, we really appreciate him. And, um, I don't see any reason, based on the data we were presented and the probing questions that we had, that a two-week rule is even necessary. Um, because it's voluntary and it's just presenting an opportunity that, that won't necessarily come again. So, and honestly, the only thing I think that was missing from his resume was master gardener and gourmet chef. Um, I can't believe we're getting some of this caliber coming to us and offering us support. So I am not only, you know, grateful, but I'm honored. So I'm, I'm proud that we were chosen. So with that, I wanted to say my piece. Um, we will, I will continue, um, to do my job based on data and not on social media. And we have district emails, our phone numbers are posted, uh, in our website, and when we hear from you that way, we know that you're serious of purpose, that you're seeking, uh, data, and that you want to understand that data better to, um, to understand how to, how to, uh, evaluate our decisions as a board. So with that, thank you, Dr. Seines, and, um, I'm ready to entertain a motion if someone's ready to make one. I thought it was going to be you, Andy, don't, but, okay. You know, I'll make the motion, I'm going to make it. I don't, I make a motion twice a year, I'm going to do it. So I move that we accept the offer to, um, extend the teacher survey related to teachers' emotional intelligence, vulnerability, distress, waiving the two-week rule. Can I have a second? Made by Brandy. She was quick. Didn't see that coming out of the corner of your eye, did you, Naomi? So, um, Cindy?
One thing that I would request is that it's discussed with the teachers' union prior to the presentation, so would you be willing to, um, amend your motion to include that piece?
They're going to do it, they definitely have committed to doing it, so if, if you're okay with it?
Okay.
So they're definitely committed to doing that. Um, so, Andy?
So I have a question. Whenever you put a constraint on a motion, there's always the, the possibility that that constraint could change the intent or what happened. So if we, as a board, tonight, say that we want to waive the two-week rule, and then they go and talk to the teachers' union, and the teachers' union wants to give it time, in my mind, that takes precedence over the board's wishes.
Actually, for the governing body, so.
Well, I, I know, but.
I would say that we want to.
But we have to be cautious, though.
I understand. But I think what we want to do is consult and inform, um, the goal was to ask for permission to do it, was it, with, with your comment, Cindy?
So if the teachers' union was not in favor of it, which, based on the information that we've been given, I can't imagine that would be the case. Uh, but if it wasn't, then I think that that's kind of a precarious, I mean, situation. I'd prefer they're not, if the, if the union's not in favor of it, then I would say, um, I wouldn't want us to do it anyways.
I understand.
Without coming back and working through that.
I appreciate that.
Right. That was, that was my point, it was, is, is that if the, I think the board is, depending on our vote, is going to, we have a way in on this. But if the, the motion says to talk to the union and they have concerns because they need more information or whatever, we must, I, I think we have to take that into account. I mean, that, that's the only benefit of waiving, of adhering to the two-week rule, because then you can get that a little bit of information, and it seems to me that's the only one we're looking, we're looking for.
Okay. So with that, I'd be glad to amend my motion. So I amend my motion to say that, um, we support the offer of the teacher survey pending, um, agreement from the MTA, uh, waiving the two-week rule.
I think that's fine. I mean, a verbal agreement would be fine. I mean, it doesn't have to be anything real fancy.
Okay.
Just, uh, you know.
So would you mind amending your second? Great, thanks.
Okay.
So we still have the second, so seconded by Brandy. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Thank you. And we're on to item number six, which is the update on summer maintenance projects with Matt.
Thank you. Uh, the only issue with, uh, summer maintenance projects is, uh, summer is no longer long enough to complete them. So we always run up against the, the wall, and we always run up against the last second, but in the end, uh, the maintenance department and Tom Toussot and Mike Dumey and everybody else and our vendors always get everything done. We do have one item complete, that's the paving at Thornton's Ferry, so if nobody is, if nobody's been down in that area, you know, take a drive past, it looks absolutely wonderful down there. Uh, the roof at Reed's Ferry School is still in pro, in progress. We expect everything to be done before school starts. The water filtration system that we had put in the budget, all the tanks and everything are in, and we're just now going through and doing the, uh, indoor plumbing, connecting the main lines to the tank of the water fountains and the sinks. We've, we've added a couple of locations since we first started, so it, it'll get, it'll get done before, uh, the beginning of, of school. Uh, we have art room cabinets that are in process, we have calf tables that are still on order, that are supposed to show up this week, and we have the bleachers behind the, uh, the high school, the older bleachers. Um, we are going to get that done probably after the football season. There was no way with the engineering and the design that needed to be done that we could have gotten that done this summer. We could have gotten it done perhaps this summer if we would have taken, um, the pre-rusted steel that you see that they use on bridges a lot. Um, that can be just cut and welded, it's just standard stock. But we, we didn't, we didn't want to use that, we wanted to match the existing, so we wanted a, an anodized steel, and that has to be all engineered and cut to length and everything like that beforehand, as well as the peers supporting that. Uh, Steve Keach has been working with us to, uh, plot out where the peers need to go. So the steel's being engineered, uh, everything's being designed, it's just not going to make it, uh, this summer, but it'll make it, uh, probably after the football season ends, and then, uh, for next year, it'll be all ready to go. But, uh, long lead item, didn't think it was going to be the case, but turned out to be, so.
So it'll be there for the spring track season or not until the fall?
Yeah.
Okay. Gotcha. Andy?
So, ju, just to be clear, one of the reasons that we put that, those bleachers into the budget was because, not only of accessibility, but there were some safety concerns about.
Yes, correct.
Have we inspected those bleachers to make sure they'll be safe for the?
Yes, we have.
So I, I would, I mean, the, the goal is if we have to use it, I want to make sure it's.
Yes.
Safe and we're not going to have any issues.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Okay. You got it. Okay. Thank you very much. We look forward to the first day of school, some more than others. My laundry is like ridiculous. Um, but on that note, we're on to item number seven, which is the approval of the July 16th, 2018 minutes. I will entertain a motion made by Cindy. Is there a second? Seconded by Andy? Everyone's holding out. Wow, you're killing me tonight. Um, are there any edits to the minutes? Seeing none? All those in favor of the minutes signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. Oh, you did? Slow on the uptick. We have an edit. Okay. You do, oh, you're good. Okay. I thought you had to change. Oh, goodness. Okay. Sorry. Okay, so we're on to item number eight, which is the acceptance of gifts and grants under $5,000 with Matt.
Thank you. Uh, we have a gift tonight, very generous gift, to Reed's Ferry Elementary School from the New Hampshire Society for Technology and Education. The amount is $3,850. Um, this grant will support the implementation of a Little Hands Learning Lab project. The team of teachers plan to purchase usable, durable STEM resources and technology tools designed specifically for students in grades K through 2. STEM in grades K, that's kind of awesome, isn't it? Uh, tools include B-Bots Blue, Roke Mobile STEM Labs, and iPads that will be shared across grade levels. Um, the 3,200 of the grant funding is to be used to purchase the technology hardware and software, and $650, uh, will be used for, uh, professional development and training. Project progress must be documented in bi-weekly posting and shared with, uh, NHT, uh, NISTI. Team must be present, present at the Kristin McCall of Technology Conference the year after receiving the grant. So there's a reporting function and there's a, a presentation function involved in this too. So that'll be an entire, uh, whole, rich learning experience from beginning to end, and the amount is $3,850.
Thank you, Matt. Do we have a motion? Andy?
I move that we accept the generous gift from the New Hampshire Society for Technology and Education in the amount of 3,850 with our sincere thanks.
Is there a second? Seconded by Cindy. Are there any questions or comments on it? A couple layers. Okay. And I think it's going to be great that we'll be able to present at the Kristin McCall of Technology Conference, so I think that's, it's actually more of an opportunity than a requirement. So, good news for us. Um, so all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries 5-0-0. We're on to item number nine, which is consent agenda with Mark.
So in consent tonight, we have the following teacher resignations. Kevin Bowden, a special education teacher at Meramec High School, and Sophia Fowler, special education teacher at Meramec, uh, Master Cola Elementary School. In addition, we have the following educator nominations. Han Don, technology education teacher at Meramec Middle School. Robert Hemmer, technology education teacher at Meramec Middle School. Hemmer, Technology Education Teacher at Merrimack Middle School. Alexandra McCafferty, Grade Five Teacher at Master Cola Upper Elementary School. Margaret Mills, Grade One Teacher, Master Cola Elementary School. Kimberly Newcomb, Language Arts Coordinator, Master Cola Elementary School. Tammy O'Connor, Special Education Teacher at Merrimack High School. Ashley Feneff, kindergarten teacher, Thornton's Ferry School. Emily Reese, Special Education Coordinator, Merrimack High School. Tammy Robey, Education Technology Integrator, Master Cola Elementary School. Brenda Weigant, Point Five Preschool Teacher, Thornton's Ferry School. And Hua Zhu, World Language Teacher at Merrimack High School. And in addition on consent, we have the approval of revised job descriptions for Merrimack Educational Support Staff.
Do we have a motion? Cindy?
I move that we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Thank you. Do we have a second? Seconded by Naomi. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. I have to get used to saying that again. It's been great. We're on to item number ten, correspondence, other, first being correspondence. Any correspondents to come before the board? Naomi?
I had communication from some parents who had questions about the quantity and content of honors summer work from the high school. It was referred over to the high school and administration, and I believe is having some discussions at that level.
Thank you. Any others? Cindy?
I had an email from a community member regarding the agenda item about offering the teacher survey related to teachers' emotional intelligence and vulnerability.
Thank you. Are there any other correspondence to come before the board? I have been in communication with Town Council Chair Finley Rothaus. We spoke today. We're looking at dates to have joint meetings. Of course, we want to talk about the skate park because that is of imminent concern. We absolutely want to talk about the middle school resource officer. It's of imminent concern. And I think the one thing that maybe we should start an annual tradition, and I hope you agree with me, is we should be having a, a fall joint meeting every year because we're going into our capital improvement planning, we're going into our budget planning, and we're asking the same taxpayer for, for, to support these budgets. So as we're going through this, maybe have an introduction to those, those things that we'll be addressing in our budget processes and make sure that we don't have so much burden in, in one ballot, one set of ballots that, because we don't collaborate enough. So I'm hoping we can do more of that. I'm sure there's much more we can discuss. I think we're covered with water as far as the school district, so I think we can keep that one off the agenda. I think we covered it ad nauseam last time. So I think we should be good there. But one of the dates I threw out, just because we meet on Mondays, was September tenth, and he's going to check that out. But if you can give me some dates in September that work for you, I will give him some flexibility as well to see what, you know, what aligns, what stars align with us. I do also have some travel in September, so I'm not going to, you know, I definitely have some challenges as well. But I think we can get together. And September will be ideal. So that's what I have for correspondence. Are there any comments from the board? No comment? Oh, Cindy?
I just have a question for Matt. It's, it's a simple question of when the bus schedule will be released?
Oh, it's, it's all set. It's just being printed. It should be online pretty soon.
So it'll be-
It's done.
It'll be online at the link that we normally have-
Yes.
As soon as it's done. And then we mail it out additionally. So sometime in the next, this week perhaps?
Yes.
Okay.
Excellent. Is there any new business to come before the board? Mark?
I just wanted to report that Mr. Bevel has requested a second hearing regarding the homework protocol before the State Board of Education. Today, we were notified by the overseer of that process that it will occur on September thirteenth. So that's all the information I have, not about process, but just about the date.
Okay. Is there any other new business to come before the board? Seeing none. Committee reports. Are there committee reports from the board? Andy?
So again, so, so my committee report is about SARESC. The SARESC Board of Directors meeting occurred on the thirteenth of August. Again, the SARESC has changed the way that it's structured such that before it was always a mem, the, the members of SARESC were membership school districts that pay to do. There was always a representative, the superintendent and a school board member was representative into the Board of Directors for SARESC. Starting last month, I think it was in July, was the first time that the SARESC Board of Directors changed to a new model where there were Board of Directors that were generally nominated by within. There's no longer a membership this, from the school districts. It's now a true nonprofit body creating educational services to any district that wants to, to be able to purchase it. So myself, as well as Superintendent Chaffrey, are both members of the Board of Directors. So I was able to attend the meeting on the thirteenth. During that period of time, we gave an update about the, the Brentwood Building. So the Brentwood Building, we closed on it on July-
Seventeenth?
Seventeenth, that's right. So now that is owned by the Merrimack School District. We're going to be, start talking about that building with planning and building and, and our board in the coming month or two. But we also had, we had to give that update to, to the SARESC Board of Directors because what it meant was SARESC finally has no real estate that's involved with that entity. So SARESC today is as it was years ago with no real estate and simply a nonprofit to deliver services to school districts. So it's sort of gotten back to its roots. And what we discussed during the, the Board of Directors meeting is their plan for what they want to do with services they want to continue to offer, as well as idea for new services they want to offer. So they're going to be working with districts like Merrimack to understand what services they'd like to see extended, what new services they want, sort of in a business model. So sort of an exciting time for SARESC moving forward to truly get back to their roots in terms of delivering services. And, and Mark and myself representing Merrimack to try to get them to connect with us on what we need, but also do business where we bring in, you know, additional revenue into SARESC so that they can develop more courses, or more training and more services down the road. So sort of an exciting time to re-swizzle SARESC into something, something that, oh God, the original superintendent, Claude Levitt, who was superintendent when I went to school here, was involved and actually helped to create this. So it was sort of exciting to be part of that.
And I had one as the alternate for Parks and Rec because the final person wasn't put in until the next night. So, so on August fifteenth, Parks and Recreation met. And a couple of things. First, they have two movies left for the movie season this summer. So Boss Baby is August twenty-fourth, and rescheduled from a rain date because I know we've had none of those this summer. But The Lion King, which is being sponsored by the Lions Club, of all things, which is perfect, is on September first. There also is one more show for this summer, and it's the twenty-ninth of August. And it's the Brickyard Blues Band. So that will wrap up their summer concert series. So I know it's with a lot of our school families enjoy during the summer. On top of that, the next night, the town council appointed Brandy to be the permanent installment for Parks and Rec. So I will stay as your alternate. So if anything comes up, give me a call. One thing that did come up on a down note with it is, you know, we definitely have concerns about the skate park, which we've talked about, I don't know, for a couple of years now. But now that we have this new dynamic, we realized when, you know, a couple of meetings, actually it was the last meeting, when our insurance company came to us, Primax, and talked about some repair issues, that one of the things they talked about with us was there were parts of it they couldn't see, and they couldn't tell what condition they were in. Well, when they went to do maintenance, they realized those things they couldn't see were in disrepair and needed, needed repairs. So the town council is, out of their budget, paying for repairs for the skate park. It is closed for a few weeks because the materials are very specific that you buy for such facilities. And right now, the skate park is closed until further notice, until the materials come in, they can be installed. But with that, there's been some challenges. First, when they put tape around the elements at the skate park that were unsafe, people were taking those tapes down and using the elements. So the tape didn't deter. So the next step was to lock the skate park. And that also unfortunately didn't deter. But they guessed to be August tenth because there's no real line of sight to when it happened. But they're estimating August tenth. People cut the fence to get in and use the skate park. So Gate City Fence had to come in and repair the fence because they are not following the rules. So with that, I'm sure we'll have lots to talk about. But the skate park is closed. It is not safe for use. Parks and Rec is a great organization with a wonderful communications platform between Facebook and their, their website. They will be very proactive in telling us when it's safe for use. So to that end, I will just say, if you have not gone to the Parks and Rec website, it's very well done, lots of information. It's parks, MerrimackParksAndRecreation.org. And their fall newsletter is up as well. So all the programs from now till the end of the year are in that newsletter. It's sixteen pages, which tells you they're a very busy and active department. And there's a lot of great resources for our families in Merrimack to use. So that is my committee report. Are there any others? No one forgot? They went somewhere? No? Good. Okay. So we will close committee reports. Since there is no public, we will not have public comments on agenda items. We'll close that. We'll take a moment to sign the manifest. And I will take, entertain a motion to adjourn from Andy. And do I have a second? Seconded by Brandy, who also might like to go home. Who knows? All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, none. The motion carries five zero zero. Thank you and good night.